So we're here at the conference, the Service Design Global Conference. And yesterday we saw a really interesting talk by Julianne Coughlin from Cork County Council. And we thought it'd be great to have a longer conversation with her. So first of all, maybe could you perhaps introduce yourself and introduce Cork for the people who don't know it?
Yes, of course. Thanks. It's nice to talk to you. Thanks, David. So my name is Julianne. I've been working in Cork County Council since 2003. So I'm there for a long time and I guess my career has changed a lot over the years. And to be fair, the council has changed a lot over the years too. So I started as a GIS person. I have an IT background and moved into the whole area of service reviews and BPIs. And that kind of naturally led into looking at an approach like service design to maybe transform some of the council services. So Cork is the second largest local authority after Dublin City in Ireland. And we have over 600 services. So we have a challenge all the time to deliver the best possible services for our customers. And we tried a lot of different processes over the years, a lot of them technology based, a lot of them more lean six sigma and that sort of, you know, streamlining BPI sort of approach. But we always felt there was an aspect missing, a customer focus missing from those approaches. So we came across service design a few years ago and some of us that had previously been looking at services in different ways, were asked, would we be interested in trying service design and experimenting with that on our services? And we formed our Service Republic team and we haven't looked back since. It's been great.
Okay, so the Service Republic team, that's really a separate entity or could you say a bit more about that?
So Service Republic is a dedicated service design unit based in Cork County Council. What's different about it, I suppose, is it's a cross departmental team. So we have a lot of people from different backgrounds on the team. There is five of us on the core team. We have IT, we have personnel or HR skills. And we also have some organizational development or change management skills. And what's really exciting about it too is we're a partnership with one of our local third level institutions. So that's Cork Institute of Technology. And that partnership really allows us to benefit from the education and experience that they can bring to our team. And we also allow students to come in and work on work placements with us. We get kind of fresh insight into how our services could be delivered. So we've named ourselves Service Republic with a view to doing something kind of radical about our services.
I also saw a presentation of yours last year at the Service Design Conference. That's right. You were talking really about a very down to earth, small case where service design had made a difference this year. Yeah, you're really here as an advocate for service design in general and clearly a seasoned expert, so.
Oh, I wouldn't say that, but okay. I'll let you say it.
So can you bring us through the changes that have happened in Cork in just the last few years?
Yes, yeah. Well, the last few years have certainly been dramatic for us, I suppose. We started with a few small services and I was just talking a minute ago about the power of starting small, of learning on live projects. And that's what we did really. And that then allowed us as a team especially to gain expertise and experience in the service design process, but also to take the opportunity to customize and develop our own service design approach to services, which is important, I think, for every organization. And we've really been trying to scale up since then and have an impact in lots of different departments and directorates across services. And I suppose what's allowing us to do that, number one, is our partnership with CIT. So we have resources we can call on there, which helps us to build scale. And also we've had a lot of interest from the few projects that we've done from within the organization. So people are actively approaching us to do work with them. So certainly the appetite for a service design and for what we can do for the organization. And even beyond that, because we've had a lot of interest from other local authorities and other public sector bodies as well here, who are in Ireland, who are trying to make the same sort of changes that we are. So it's been really exciting.
Yeah, because what is actually the relationship that you have with your colleagues at the Cork government? Do you see yourself more as a consultancy firm that helps them? Or are you really like becoming part of a team where you work together with them? Do they offer you assignments that you work on or how does that work?
Yeah, it's interesting. As much as possible, we want to be seen as part of the organization. But I suppose occasionally there is power in being perceived as something slightly different, something new, something maybe that might deliver some outside expertise in an area. So we deliberately branded ourselves differently to other teams and sections in the organization. Because we felt that we had to, from the very beginning, let people know that we were there to do something different and to try something new. But when we do work with other departments and sections on projects, we do invite staff into the team and they do become part of our team for the duration of the work. So it's finding that balance, being seen as the expert outsider, which is a good thing sometimes in the local authority, but keeping the expertise in-house at the same time and working with staff who are in the different sections.
And do you think this is going to be the model for the long term? That there will always be this separate group of designers? Or do you think at some point different departments will have their own designers? How do you see that?
What we're hoping to do, I suppose, we'll always retain a core maybe expertise in that. We've been lucky, we've been given the time to actually come out of the day job and become part of this unit and dedicate basically our work week to week to service design approach. But what we want to do is develop champions, I guess, of service design in the different departments in the organization. So we've been thinking of ideas, we haven't rolled them out yet, maybe I shouldn't reveal anything, but I'm going to anyway. This idea of kind of internal internships within our team, so that we would bring people from other departments in and they would work with us maybe for a period of time and build up their understanding and knowledge of what service design can do and go back to their own areas then and really promote that and work with us to build that out again in the organization. So we're hoping that will work.
Yeah, so you're really spreading the knowledge.
Trying to spread the word, yes.
That's great. The topic of the conference is delivering services. How do you do that if you work together with those other departments? Do they still have like the capacity in-house to, for example, developers or visual designers? Or is that also something you offer them?
Developers are actually not in-house in Cork County Council and a lot of local authorities are like us. They've outsourced that sort of technical expertise. I think the main reason for that is it's quite expensive to retain technical experts in the public sector. And at the moment, the jobs are just so widely available, there is very few opportunities for us to recruit, you know? Also, the technology changes really quickly and unless you can really stay at the cutting edge of that, it's maybe difficult for you if you're in a technical area of work and the public sector probably doesn't allow you to stay at the coalface of that. So we do have to outsource certain things. In terms of the visual side and the more graphical design type of work, I suppose, we're doing that ourselves. But we do, I suppose, benefit from the mentorship of experts and agencies outside. So we will certainly where we feel there's a gap even in our own skills, we'll recruit or retain somebody to come in and teach us or to do something for us, a specific piece of work. So it's kind of a mixture of in-house outsourcing, working with internal departments, bringing in experts, mentoring and really upskilling and building capacity as we go.
When talking about transformation projects, often people say it's important to have small early wins. If you think about back to the beginning, are there any early wins that really stand out to you?
Yes, I think we took a couple of services and very early on ran them through a service design process when we were learning the methodology and the tools. And they were simple services that we knew we could design quickly, we could turn around quickly. And we also added the aspect of digitization of the services to that transformation process. And that gave us something very practical, I suppose, and concrete that we could deliver in a short space of time. So I think just having worked in housing, housing is our big success story because housing as a department in most local authorities is under severe pressure. And I think the housing staff in those departments are also feeling the strain of not being able to maybe provide all of the services or the resources that are needed by customers. So the fact that we managed to engage them early on with a tiny service that they actually didn't value, housing representations was the one that I've spoken about a few times. And it had a few aspects to it that made it a good choice. It was a small service. Our politicians and elected members were involved in the service, which also gave it an interesting edge. And it wasn't seen as something that added value to the housing department. It was seen as something they had to do, but didn't really feel allowed them to benefit in any way from delivering their core services. So anything we could do to reduce the burden of that service on housing was certainly a win there. And then the fact that we used a service design approach to it and actually worked with the elected members, it gave the housing department a good profile from their point of view as well. So we delivered something with housing for them. We actually kind of gave the credit back to housing for that too. So it was something that they felt they'd achieved on behalf of our elected members. And that was an important thing for them to be able to say as a department. So that sort of choosing your first few services and getting those quick wins in is very important.
And then also probably putting the ownership at the organization themselves that they feel proud and they also bring out the story to.
Passing back the credit. It's very important, yeah.
Yes. So you're all non-trained service designers before you came into this group?
That's fair to say.
How did that happen? How did you become an expert in such a short period?
Well, I don't know if I describe myself as an expert, but I suppose I feel that more than anything, we were all people who were very enthused about, number one, where we worked. We love working in Cork County Council. We all have the kind of personality where we would do the best we could, whatever our role or our position was in the organization. So I think we had the right attitude towards delivery of services, which is probably the most important thing to start out with when you're building your expertise or your knowledge as a service designer. There's still lots for us to learn. I wouldn't say by no means we know everything about it. But we have a technical background, which is very useful where it comes to the digital services side. We have a change management kind of expertise, which you do need for any sort of transformation. So I think the combination of those skills, maybe albeit without the traditional design sort of skills. And that's something I think you kind of have in you or you don't have in you as well. So those things have certainly started us out on the right footing, I think, and given us a good foundation to learn. But we're still learning, to be honest.
You mentioned enthusiasm and pride. Is that something that's just inherently in Cork? Or is that something that's cultivated? How does that work?
Yeah, it does seem to come across like that at this event. There's been a lot of talk of Cork and people being proud about Cork and things coming from Cork and everything. But actually, I think not everyone, I mean, we've painted a kind of picture of people really wanting to make changes for their customers across all of our departments. And we've been amazed, we've discovered so many people in our own organization, apart from ourselves, who are like that, you know? Obviously, there are those who just still will go through the motions every day. I think there is a certain pride in Cork. People do have a very strong sense of place, actually. And that probably has come across as well in the last couple of days. We are very proud of our county and maybe it comes from the natural rivalry as well that we have with Dublin as a capital city. So anything we can do to kind of make that better or promote that or, and that really does carry through for those of us on the team into our working life as well. So we're keen to make Cork County Council the best there is.
Yeah, so for those people who were not at the conference, because I'm sure the ones who were here, they saw it.
Yes.
There is this map and it says Cork and then the rest is like not Cork. But I also heard your colleague saying something about a research you guys did, where you asked the civil servants, like, how do you think people perceive the services? Where they actually answered that they thought citizens find it really bad. Whereas the citizens were actually saying that it was quite okay.
It was quite good, yeah.
That's difference between the expectations and like what they thought the citizens were thinking. I think that's quite an interesting view. And then if you put that next, so making them feel proud of where they work and of Cork by itself, I think that could help in changing that view of their own organization and their own job.
Yes, I think that is changing a little bit too. That survey did kind of surprise all of us, to be honest. We were really taken aback by the level of positivity towards the council that was out there, given that we felt quite, I suppose, under pressure and overwhelmed trying to deliver services. Some of that probably did come from the fact that we were coming out of the other side of a recession, a period of recession where resources were just cut so drastically across the public sector, not just here, but in lots of countries. And we always felt maybe that the services we were providing had suffered significantly as a result. But I think in a lot of cases, our staff did whatever they could to compensate for the fact that maybe they were under pressure or under resourced in providing those services. So yeah, it was an interesting, interesting survey.
In your talk, you also talked a bit about the difference between national level and a local level. One thing I can imagine when thinking about applying services at a local level, does that not mean, yeah, you are reinventing the wheel? Because different counties, they have the same problems, I would expect. What do you think about that?
Yes, that is true. And I suppose in some instances, there are definitely services that should be designed that could realistically fit in most local authority areas. Our experience as a large local authority sometimes has been that national systems are tried and tested with certain types of local authorities. And maybe it doesn't always translate properly to the scale of local authority like ourselves or to maybe the larger Dublin city authorities as well. So there's definitely a role for national provision of services nationally. But I suppose the other thing that we do have in the local context is maybe the ability to be a little more responsive and reactive towards our customers and to just get things done. And it's not always about digital services either, but certainly I think there's a balance to be found between allowing people to go ahead and provide, you know, a certain segment of services locally and then maybe look to national ones for the more standard across the board ones. It's just traditionally the national services in Ireland, I suppose, where they're digitized in particular, are usually rolled out and designed at national level and don't always suit the local sector.
Yeah, it was something I also remembered from your talk. And what I especially remembered is what you said, that actually the local governments are more close to the citizens. So they get a lot of feedback. And if then the service is provided by the national government, then it often, the feedback doesn't get back to them. So it's harder to improve the services to the citizens.
That's true. I mean, especially when you're using something like service design and you are trying to all the time review and revise and go back on your services and see what you can do to improve them with that feedback. There is definitely a more of a disconnect, obviously, between services that are actually accessed locally, but maybe delivered or provided at national level. So it's just, again, it is about finding the balance. There are instances where that really doesn't matter very much. But, but there are services and there are opportunities really for local authorities to provide services more locally and in closer connection with the customer. So.
Yeah, so it's really a balance between not building all the same thing, but also, yeah, making sure that the service is qualitatively going towards the citizens and that the feedback is coming, yeah, back to the people who built the actual part of that service.
Absolutely, because a lot of time, local authorities are trying to deliver the same service, but they're actually doing it in a quite a different context. So the more rural local authorities, for example, have maybe customers that have slightly different needs to those that are more urban oriented. And it's just a lot of the time, the design maybe doesn't allow for that distinction and that difference, those localizations and services.
Yeah. Is there maybe some ambition that you guys would have to see how you could maybe collaborate with a different level of organizations or with other counties in?
Well, I suppose our ambition at the moment is focused more around Cork and doing what we can for Cork County Council. But we have had a lot of interest from other local authorities in what we're doing. And there is a lot of really great innovations and transformations happening in other councils in Ireland as well, just not necessarily under the banner of service design, but in other ways. So finding a way that we can share those ideas and collaborate, maybe less formally than we often do. Because another problem we have in the public sector is that we tend to like to bureaucratize everything to some degree. You know, we have to put layers and layers of complexity on things sometimes and everything has to be very formal. So trying to shake that off and just allow people to maybe be a little bit more creative and a little bit more informal in how they engage with each other might actually allow us to really make some progress in the delivery of services together as well between local authorities and not just within our own, yeah.
So I think Cork can be a great source of inspiration for other local governments. Where do you get your own inspiration?
Actually, I suppose I have to say a big thing about my own inspiration, it comes from the team. We have an amazing team. I haven't really had a chance to give them enough credit, I think, over the last few days. But we've really formed as a team in a way that maybe other teams don't always, you know? People get put together as individuals into teams sometimes and don't necessarily become a really well functioning team. But we've been lucky, we really have worked so well together and we're all the time motivating and driving each other on. And we have quite, even though we're at different levels in terms of grades, we have quite a flat structure in how we actually work as a team. And that's really been very powerful for us. So I'd have to give a lot of credit to my team.
How many people are in the team? What kind of profiles?
There's five of us in the team. I'm heading up the team and there are three others who have IT backgrounds. And there is another person who came from the personnel or HR background. So it's been interesting having that angle. We did have someone from change management previously too. But as often happens, they got pulled into other work in the council. Having someone from personnel or from HR has been useful because he has a staff relations background. So he can really give us some insight into when we're engaging with staff in the organization, what way that works. And then on the technical side, we come from different areas of technologies. There is a BI specialist, which actually has been great to have on the team for visualization of our data and our results, I suppose. And then there's another business analyst person like myself, I suppose, that's really more my background. And then someone who's more on the technical and data side. So it's a really good mix as it happens for us.
I can imagine having a BI person is very relevant when you talk about proving effect and results. Could you say something about that?
Absolutely, yes. One of the things we can never lose sight of, I guess, is that we're being allowed to do this, but we have to prove that it's working. And we need to prove it in a way that's understandable and relatable for both customers in terms of what we can show back to them for the staff we work with on services, but also for our senior managers. And they definitely have a requirement to understand the impact that the transformation that we're trying to achieve with service design has. And there's no doubt that having someone who can really put that in a way that's not just lists of sheets and figures and actually visualize the results for them is very powerful for us. So it's certainly another aspect of the design of the service that we try to take into account.
What kind of requirements do you have from management? Can you give an example? Is it?
In terms of the sorts of measures, is it? A lot of the time, there's probably no getting away from it. It's in terms of maybe time and cost savings on services and how those have improved. It is also in expansion of channels or variation of channels in reduction in things like maybe calls to contact centers or reduction in failure demand, the usual sorts of measures, I suppose. But what we're trying to include more in those sorts of assessments are things like customer feedback and not just, I guess, the ratings for services, the more, you know, the standard sort of feedback ones that you'd have. But things like the comments, the actual comments that have come back and maybe the results of re-surveying or re-researching with customers, what their experience of a service is after you've designed it. So we try to pull all of those hard and soft measures into a format that isn't too long or difficult to understand, but is quite visual. Because funnily enough, we're all quite visual, even people who don't think they are. When you present them with a graph, people can get a sense of what you're talking about more easily than if you just give them a sheet of paper with lots of writing on it.
Yeah. Yesterday, there was a talk about robotics. And the speaker made a point that you hear a lot of people saying robots are going to take our jobs. But what he said was like that actually 70% of the people now are performing tasks that could be done by robots, but they could have been doing so much more valuable work. And it doesn't mean that the robots, if they are there, that means that they will not have a job, but they can just do so much more valuable work?
Yes.
Is that something that you are also working on in Cork?
Yes, and actually, that's another measure I should have mentioned. It's the change in the role or change in the work activities of staff involved in services too. So moving them from what's more repetitive, more tedious, routine activities into maybe slightly higher value activities. So our housing reps is again, even right from day one, a good example of that. So data entry was just a huge burden on staff in housing for that service. And we were pretty much able to eliminate that by 85% reduction in that particular activity. So move those people then into the more direct and maybe more pertinent provision of housing services and more higher value activities.
And how do you do that in practice? Because that's a point where people could get a lot of resistance because they're maybe quite comfortable in the job that they have and they have to change. They have to do, maybe put more effort in the beginning and like getting another role inside the organizations. How do you deal with that?
That's true. That's maybe where our staff relations person comes in. And I suppose the fact that when you're redesigning a service and the people that you're working with are actually involved in that redesign too, it does make a difference because they start to see the transformation and the change and what that service is going to mean, both for them and for the customer. So they do have an understanding as you're going along, what's likely to be the end result from their point of view as well in terms of the work they're going to be doing. It's really breaking down the fear around that change is equally an important part of the design process and giving them a sense that this is going to be only better for them. To be totally fair to our senior management as well, I mean, they're very openly encouraging people to go into the higher value areas and to maybe think about their jobs and explore the ideas for, you know, improving services and improving their own working lives as well. So that's an important aspect of the redesign.
You're saying fear. Fear is something I also noted down as one of recurring themes in some of the presentations I saw yesterday. What kind of fears do you have to deal with and how do you deal with fear?
Yeah, actually, all sorts of fears. And the really fundamental one for us at the very beginning of the whole service design journey was actually the fear of talking to our customers, just going out there and really speaking to them. So we did a workshop on that one yesterday, actually, Facing Your Fear of the Citizen, it was called. It's a very real thing because we don't do that very much in the public sector. We don't have really dedicated teams of researchers who can do that for us either. So if you're going to do it, you have to try to do it yourself. And it's the unknown and it's worrying what they're going to say or how you're going to come across or what language you should be using. And as much as possible, we're trying to build, I suppose, the resources behind that exercise so that if someone's asked to do it, we can take them through that process, having learned from our own experience. And it was just a case of going out and doing it really, you know? But documenting how that went and understanding what makes it work well and what doesn't. And then walking through that with people, so maybe not leaving them alone to do it, but being part of that process with them. That's a big fear, you know, facing your fear of what people will tell you about your services.
Yeah, I was actually in that workshop and I wanted to elaborate a little bit on that. What I, it was super simple what you did, but it was so, it kept me thinking and it was really valuable. Like you gave us a persona of a civil servant and someone who's really uncomfortable with facing the customer. And our job in the workshop was to elaborate a little bit on the persona and then to map all the fears that this person could have and then see how we could solve them. And I think that's actually something a lot of service designers sometimes forget to do, to also make a persona or a profile from someone in the organization and see what could the resistance be at some moment? And it can really save us a lot of time in projects to elaborate on that beforehand and see how we can anticipate on those kind of things. So I found that even the format was super simple. I found it really inspiring. And I think I'm, I'm sure gonna do that as well in some of our projects.
That is true, because even when we talk about personas ourselves, we were at the beginning always talking about our customers. But actually, you do have to think about your own, what you're bringing to the process yourself and your staff, what they're going to feel when you're taking them through the whole design, design process as well with you.
So we've been talking a lot about the point of view of local governments improving. But you did work with an agency, I believe, at the start.
We did.
Snook.
With Snook, yeah, absolutely.
Well, it seems that that was a productive and a good relationship.
Very good.
And as an agency, if we want to be able to have a same successful relationship with local governments, what were the real ingredients for success there?
I think what drew us to Snook as an agency to start with, well, obviously, if an agency has experience working with the public sector, that's a good thing. Not necessarily the most important thing though. What was important for us was that we really wanted someone who'd come in and build enough capacity in our own team that they could then leave. And a lot of time when you're working with third parties, certainly in my IT days, third parties will often give you enough to kind of keep you going, but then always want you to go back and back and back to them. But Snook really, from the outset, said, we'll do what needs to be done with you, but allow you then to do it yourself. So we can actually go. Our job will be to make ourselves redundant. Our job will be to make ourselves redundant, from your point of view. And that really appealed to us because that was exactly what we were looking for from the agency.
Yeah. And for instance, the decision to become Service Republic, a separate entity, was that a decision that was made before interacting with the agency or was that an advice from them?
That was something that we'd decided beforehand. We wanted to build an in-house team. We knew we wanted the capacity to remain within the organisation and for the expertise to be developed within the organisation. But we did want to, in some way, I guess, identify ourselves as something different and new in the organisation too. So we hadn't come up with our name as such, and that was something we did ourselves, actually. And the branding also was something we subsequently did ourselves. But certainly the idea, having worked with Snook of doing that, they certainly shared a lot of case studies with us and stories of other organisations that they'd worked with where embedding the expertise into the organisation can benefited from, you know, a strong sense of branding and team and it being something new and different, but still part of the organisation.
Yeah, we're here at the Service Design Conference and the service designers here, they add a lot of value to the practice of service design and they like to talk about service design to clients. But something we often notice is that, yeah, people don't know what it means and it doesn't really make sense to explain what it means. That we're kind of like, but we're still guilty of that. Like we try to explain it, but sometimes we think, why should we keep on using this term and shouldn't we just talk about the value that we want to bring? How do you do that at Cork? Do you actually talk about the term service design or is that not really a concept within the organisation?
We were so delighted with our own discovery of service design at the start that we spoke about it to everyone. And we pretty quickly realised that, you know, unless we were going to get into a very long explanation, people weren't really, weren't really understanding what we were saying. I think I mentioned this at the members event. I don't know if it went down very well, but I think sometimes the idea of using the word service design, it can create a bit of a barrier in what you're trying to do. So we've tried to temper our language to suit the environment that we're in because we're not really trying to do anything very radical. We're just trying to bring people with us on this transformation journey. And putting a lot of unusual language and terms into the mix there can really create another obstacle for you to try to overcome. That's definitely true in the public sector, probably more than other sectors. So, you know, having a way to develop the language of transformation using service design that's suitable for the public sector is definitely something else that we're doing as we go. So, yeah, we're not hung up on the names so much.
Yeah, it also remembers me of something that you said, that like digitisation is actually your Trojan horse in the organisation. So a lot of people, they know they have to or they really want to make their services more digital and that you can use that momentum actually to make it digital in a really good way and a customer centric way.
Even if it's not as customer centric as you like at the start, just the power of giving them something, a new channel, not an exclusive channel, but an additional one, I would say, and just showing them how much benefit that can bring with that change, any sort of change really, that they can buy into and they can identify with. That's your hook, that's your way to get them to go a little further down the road with you then the next time on something else and something more design oriented, yeah.
Just one thing I'm still wondering, you talked a bit about including in politicians. Well, that seems, that seems a challenge already, or maybe that's something you can say something about. But I'm particularly wondering, have there been successes from their point of view as well? Have they, as politicians, seen, ah, this is a tool we can use and can make things, have successes for ourselves?
Absolutely, yes. With housing representations, because we actually invited them into the design process, we just decided we'd do that really. And I guess we did have a lot of assumptions about how that was going to work ourselves at the start. Would they have time? How engaged would they be? Would this be yet another thing that they would need convincing about? But in actual fact, they were surprisingly, you know, enthusiastic about getting involved and working with us. And the fact that we've given them something that they've had a part in designing, I think as well, you know, there's that little bit of pride in there, we had something to do with this, this is, we helped ourselves. Again, it's kind of giving the credit back, you know? That's important, no matter what group of stakeholders you're working with, actually. And they've really been very impressed with the impact that that new service has had for themselves. And in fact, at a few meetings since, have thrown some other suggestions on the table about services we might look at for them and with them. So it's certainly nothing to be afraid of. I would suggest that no matter who your stakeholders are, just setting those little assumptions aside at the start and going and talking to them can yield surprising results, you know?
Great. Well, you and your colleagues have been sharing a lot of knowledge here, but I'm sure you also had some time to listen to some other talks or no?
Almost no.
Almost not, yeah, I know, you had like two workshops and two talks. Is there a talk that you listened to that you remember something from, something new for you that inspired you, that you think you will take home after the conference?
Actually, well, I heard Lorna the first day and she's always very inspiring. Even on the day of the members event, oh, I actually can't remember that person's name, but he talked about designing the design or designing service design. And I just thought, it's actually, it's such an amazing discipline and there's so much to it that we're really only at the tip of the iceberg. I think the thing that coming to these events makes a group like us realise is that while we're at the practice and we're at that phase of it, we're not really at the research part or we're not at the, at the discipline end of it. And there's so much to be gained from just having a bit of exposure to that too. So it is important for people who are maybe using service design as a process in their organisations to give themselves the chance to just absorb some of the ideas and the expertise at events like this. I'm afraid that's pretty much all I can say about that.
No, but I think that's a very, very good point you make though, it's indeed. And I think it's an inherent part of service design is not just taking things for face value and accepting them the way they are. And that also means not just accepting the way you work as this is the fixed way to work and that can evolve as well.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. And in fairness, you never feel intimidated at an event like this either, even though there are people here who obviously have such expertise and are so skilled and have worked for so long in the area. And we're really newcomers, but we've always felt, you know, comfortable, relaxed, people are generous with their experience and their expertise. And it's great to just get some ideas from people in the field like that.
Yeah, actually, what you say, like you're newcomers, I don't totally think that's true, but still, that's what I always found the most inspiring talks. There was one person also who said, I'm not a service designer, that's how the talks.
That was our chief executive.
And that was really nice. And then there was also just a speaker from VNA and she's also really not a service designer, but what she was doing was amazing. And it's really us service designers, we can learn so much more from, exactly the practice that people are in and their, what they are trying to do with something that they don't even call service design.
Yes, yeah. Maybe the trick is not to call it service design, as I said.
Maybe we should just call it common sense. I think it's been really great that we got to have a chance to have this conversation with you. I think we'll make a really interesting episode for our listeners, especially the ones working in local government. And thank you very much.
It's been really nice catching up with you. Thank you very much.
If people want to find out more about you or Service Republic, where can they go online?
They can go to our CorkCoco website, I suppose. www.corkcoco, cork, C-O-R-K-C-O-C-O dot I E. We have a Twitter account as well, just at Service Republic. So all just rolled together into one word. And they can certainly email us if they want to at serviced republic at corkcoco.ie.
Okay, great. We will also add those links to the notes of the episode. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks a lot and enjoy the rest of the conference.
I will, thank you.
The Service Design Podcast was brought to you by the Service Design Network and Night Moves. For more information, previous episodes or to join the conversation, please visit servicedesignpodcast.com. For more information about the Service Design Network, visit servicedesign-network.org. And for Night Moves, visit nightmoves.be. If you enjoyed this episode, please consider subscribing to this podcast. The intro and outro music is from If The Stars Grow Dim Tonight by Hydrogen Sea featuring I Will, I Swear. Until next time.